Okay, I call to order a meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is 7:15. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Vice Chair of the Planning Board and I am the Acting Chair for tonight's meeting. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So when I call your name, please, if you're on mute, take yourself off mute and respond by saying that you're present or yes, or something in the affirmative. I'll start with the Planning Board members. Marty Jacobs.
Here.
Jean McKnight.
Here.
Ted Owens.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
I'm Paul Alpert, I'm here. So we have full attendance tonight. For the Planning Board staff, we have our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Here.
And Alex Clea, Alexandra Clea.
Yes, here.
Good. So we have anticipated speakers and other presenters or interested parties for the various matters on our agenda. And I will take them in the order that we will consider them. So first, on the 100 West Street zoning proposal, we have the attorneys Roy Kramer.
Here.
Evans Huber.
Here.
And on behalf of the proponents, Lee Bloom.
Here.
And Louise Gianakis.
Here.
And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Thank you. Next, we have a hearing for 225 Highland Avenue. Attorney George Jinter Jr.
Present.
The owner of the property, and I hope I don't mispronounce your name, John Gianakopoulos.
Here.
Thank you. Maura Denigan.
Here.
And I believe that's it for that project. And lastly, for the 330 Reservoir Avenue hearing, I have Scott Ravelson.
Here.
Shuang Mang.
Hi, here.
And Kai Zhao.
Kai Zhao, he's not here, my husband. He has to work, so I'm here to do the.
Very good.
Vacation.
Limit. I think that is everybody. So, good evening. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board, being conducted remotely, consisted with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, given the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth because of the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting, however, will feature public comment if the public is attending and wishes to speak. This meeting, the Needham Planning Board is convening by Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other people may be able to see you. And, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Before we get to the first order of business, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members of the Planning Board, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. After the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for comments. Finally, each vote that is taken by the Planning Board pursuant to the Governor's Order will be conducted by roll call vote. We may lose connectivity. And if we do, I would like a motion from one of the Planning Board members, please, to automatically continue this meeting until July 21, Tuesday, July 21, 2020, at 7:15.
I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote. Jean McKnight.
Yes.
Ted Owens.
Yes.
Marty Jacobs.
Yes.
Adam Block.
Yes.
And I vote yes, so it passes unanimously. We will now move to the first item on our agenda, which is a vote to refer and schedule a public hearing for a zoning bylaw change for 100 West Street to redevelop and zoning change of the property to enable an 83-unit assisted living and Alzheimer's memory care facility in 70, I've got 71, but Roy, I believe it's 72.
72, yes.
Departments. The zoning bylaw, there were actually two zoning bylaws. The first is, has been provided and has been listed at our website. And we've had multiple meetings about this. And Article 1 is the substance of the proposal, the proposed bylaw. And Article 2 is the map change for the creation of the Avery Square Overlay District. Article 1, as I said, is the substance for the creation of the Avery Square Overlay District and the rules that will be followed for projects within the Avery Square Overlay District. So I will need a motion to refer these two articles to the Board of Selectmen. And I believe that's all that we need in the motion. Is that right, Lee?
A motion to refer them for public hearings.
And for public hearing.
By the Planning Board.
Right. And, and do we set the public hearing date as part of that?
We do not. The Selectmen will vote to actually refer it back when they next meet on July 21. And, and the Planning Board public hearing, we're going to schedule for August the 11th.
Okay.
So move, so move.
Thank you, Marty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Adam. Is there any discussion? I just want to point out that I did find one very small typo, Lee, before you send it to the Board of Selectmen in Article 2 on the zoning map. Pretty far down, if you've got the hard copy of what was in our packet, it is in the first paragraph, four lines from the bottom of the first paragraph. The word southerly has an extra letter in it. I crossed it out, but I believe there's an N in there. It says southerly, and it should be southerly. So.
I believe Jean had her hand up, Paul.
Jean?
Yes. I listened to the, a part of the Select Board's recent meeting, I think it was on June 23, where they saw our presentation of this project and expressed their support for the project. One issue that was raised at the Selectmen's meeting, and particularly by Selectman Matthews, was the train noise and his seeming insistence that the developer and eventually the rent, you know, the lessor of the units in the building make sure that every prospective tenant is aware of the extent of the train horn noise. And in response to that statement by Selectman Matthews, Mr. Bloom happened to mention that, that, you know, his company owns many elderly housing facilities. One of them is at a railroad crossing in Melrose. And he found that the train noise was not all that hard to live with. My husband, who serves on the Transportation Committee, Stephen McKnight, and who's familiar with these issues, looked up the Melrose train line. Melrose, I believe it was in 2013, maybe 2014, established a quiet zone. So the trains in Melrose, as they go through the crossings, do not blow their horns. So I just wanted the team for 100 West Street to be aware of that and to take that into account when they're doing their planning for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Is there any further discussion on the motion to refer these two articles to the Board of Selectmen, for them to refer it back to us for a public hearing? Hearing none, we'll now call the roll call for the vote. Marty Jacobs.
Yes.
Jean McKnight.
Yes.
Ted Owens.
Yes.
Adam Block.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that makes it unanimous. So voted. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for an amendment to a major project site plan review, number 2008-08, VSA LLC, 180 Countryway Needham, Massachusetts, is the petitioner for property located at 225 Highland Avenue in Needham. This has been posted and it has been advertised. And if I may have a motion to dispense with the reading of the notice.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll call the roll. Marty Jacobs.
Yes.
Jean McKnight. Ted Owens.
Yes.
Adam Block.
Yes, I note that Jean is muted.
I saw her say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes, so it's unanimous. Thank you. So I turn the floor over to Attorney George Jinter Jr.
George, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as indicated, this is an application for the property or part of the property at 225 Highland. It's located at the corner of Highland Ave and Wexford Street in the Highland Commercial 128 zoning district. The building that is there is existing building. It was built pursuant to a special permit that was issued in 2008, amended in 2009, and again in 2011. The, it's a two-story building and the top story is occupied entirely by Gymboree under a special permit that was issued in 2011. The first floor is divided into three separate spaces. One space is occupied by Snippets, which is a children's hair cutting salon. The other place is occupied by You Break, I Fix, which is basically cell phone repair and some retail. And then the third space, which is the subject of this evening's hearing, is currently vacant, was last occupied by Huntington Learning Center under a special permit issued in 2012. So with Huntington having gone out, we've got a proposed new tenant going in, and that's the Learning Tree Preschool. It's similar, but obviously not the same as Huntington Learning Center. So we do have to go through the process of another amendment to the existing site plan. Learning Tree Preschool was established in 1997. It's a fully licensed operation. So it's been around for over 20 years. They did have two facilities, one in Alston, one in West Roxbury. The Alston one is now closed and they just have the West Roxbury facility. But again, they've been in operation for over 20 years. Maura Denigan, who's on the Zoom call tonight, is the owner proprietor operator. And so later on, you know, if for some questions maybe the board has, she can chime in. So the Learning Tree Preschool is proposed to take 11,009 square feet of space. It's located on the left side of the first floor, if you're looking at it from Highland Ave. They're going to use it for two sort of separate programs. One program is for toddlers. That program runs for children that are from 15 months to 2.8 years of age. In the letter that I submitted, I rounded up to three years. And then the other, the other program is a preschool program that goes from 2.9 years all the way up to six years. They anticipate having nine children in the toddler program and 10 children in the preschool program. And I want to just point out that that's a little bit different than the numbers that was in the letter that I submitted. When I first spoke with Maura, it was way back in March and prior to COVID. In fact, it might have even been at the end of February. But with the whole COVID situation, we were delayed filing. And then even after we filed, we were delayed in getting on a hearing. So in speaking with her in the run up to tonight's hearing, we spoke, I went over the numbers to make sure they were all still accurate, and there has been a change. So in the letter that I submitted, it originally referenced 13 children in the toddler, but as I've said, that is now nine. So the original thought was there might be what's known as a split class that had both toddlers and older kids, but that's not going to happen. It's going to be just the nine toddlers and 10 preschool. So and as you'll see, when I get to the parking, it actually makes everything a little bit easier all the way around. So there will be, and also because it's only going to be nine toddlers and 10 preschool students, the staff is reduced as well. So in the letter, based on the, you know, the prior sort of thought, there was four staff plus one required. Now there's only going to be three staff plus one for a total of four. All right, the business is proposed to operate from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. There would be drop off in the morning between 7:30 and 9 a.m. Pickup in the afternoon between 3:00 and 5:30 p.m. Now, one thing that it was not covered in the materials, because didn't, we didn't, I didn't find out about it until later, is there's also going to be a proposed outdoor play area. And if I can, I'd like to actually share my screen, because it's, I can show you on the site plan, but it wasn't actually designated. All right. So you see here, this is the existing building. And the part of the building that, that is proposed for Learning Tree is right sort of in here. So it's this, this end of the building. So what's going to be proposed is to take, to connect a fence from this corner of the building over to the existing fence here, and then another fence from this corner of the building over to the existing fence here, essentially creating this corridor as an outdoor activity space for the children. All right. So as I said, that wasn't in the, in the application materials, but, but now that, now that we're aware of it, I want to make sure that the board's aware of it and can take that into consideration. While I have the screen shared, let me just show you as well, the space. So you can see here, this is the Huntington Learning Center space right in here, a former Huntington Learning Center, now Learning Tree. And it's basically predominantly an open space. There's restrooms included inside. There's an office for administrative and sort of clerical functions and meetings with parents and whatnot. The way the building is set up, there's also a common hallway here with common bathrooms in the back. Now, this looks to be just a large open space. You can see, it's kind of hard to see it on the screen, but in the materials that, that you should have received, it actually gets broken up into sort of the preschool and toddler sections. This doesn't show it, but those will actually be designated off by four-foot partitions. I'm going to show you what those look like. They are from the, from the existing Learning Tree facility. So these are just, you know, half tight partition walls, just to create separate designated space areas for the different programs and different activities. So this particular use, we believe, falls under the Dover Amendment provision of 40A. In particular, 40A Section 3 cites back to 40A Section 15D, which defines childcare centers as facilities that are operated on a regular basis, whether they're known as a child nursery, nursery school, kindergarten, child play school, or preschool, which receive children not of common parentage under the age of seven years for non-residential custodial care, separate and apart from their parents. So this operation falls within that. As a result, it is exempted from zoning under 40A Section 3, and it is also exempted from zoning under 3.2.5.1A of the Needham zoning bylaw. So the use itself is an exempt use and is allowed as a result. However, we still have to go through site plan and parking considerations. With respect to site plan, you know, there's no real material changes to the building. There's no changes to the parking area. There's no changes to the driveway. The only exterior change would be the outdoor play area, which is just the installation of two short sections of fence that are about, I think one's 11 and a half feet long and the other one's about 12 and just over 12 feet long. But, but we still, so there's no real changes to the site, no changes to the building, other than the internal changes which are minor. So that aspect is dealt with. However, we still have to go through parking. Now, there's not a set designation for this use in the zoning bylaw. So we've requested that the Planning Board make a determination that this use falls within the childcare or daycare standard that has been adopted for prior applications. And that, that standard was based upon the ITE Technical Manual, a July 1994 study that had been done. So we'd ask that the Board apply that standard. And under that standard, if the enrollment is known and is less than 45 students, the requirement is one parking space for every five students, plus one parking space for each staff. In this case, because we now have 19 total students, 19 students divided by five is 3.8, and then there's four staff, that's a total of 7.8. You round that up to eight. So the total parking demand for this proposed use is now eight. That's exactly the same parking demand that Huntington Learning Center had. And so as a result, we do, we no longer require an additional parking waiver. There is already an existing parking waiver on this building, on the site, that was issued in connection with Huntington Learning Center. And this use now falls within that and no additional waiver is required. Now, I do want to mention a little bit about the drop off and pickup, because I know the police chief had a concern about that. When Huntington Learning Center came in, one of the reasons why the Board allowed it was because the drop off and pickup didn't materially conflict with the drop off and pickup with Gymboree. And this is essentially, it's, it's a different time, but it's the same kind of thing here. Gymboree, their prime activity period is between 9 a.m. and 3 p.m. As I indicated earlier, the drop offs here happen between 7:30 a.m. and 9 a.m. So the drop offs are done for Learning Tree when Gymboree starts. And then Gymboree tends to end around 3 o'clock, which is when the pickups start for this use. So there's not likely to be a direct conflict. But beyond that, the drop offs and pickups, certainly right now, under the COVID, you know, the COVID situation, they all have to be scheduled. And so, you know, if it, if we need to, we can schedule those going forward just to ensure that there are no actual conflicts, especially in that afternoon period, when Gymboree technically, they, they are allowed to be open until 5 o'clock, but they really don't do much business between 3 and 5. So as a result, we don't think that there's, you know, likely to be any real conflict between the two users with the drop offs and pickups. And in that regard, I point out that Huntington Learning Center was in there since 2012 for several years. And there were never any real issues with that use being there in conjunction with Gymboree. So I wouldn't expect there to be any real issue with this use either, considering that although Huntington Learning Center had their peak sort of after Gymboree's morning, this user will have their peak before Gymboree's morning. So it's kind of the same situation, it just shifts to earlier instead of later. But so as a result, we think it'll, they'll actually be compatible uses that, that can coexist on the site. And along that, I also point out, you know, there are 22 parking spaces on site. And there's an additional five spaces in a lot just down the street that are also available for use with this building. So with all that, basically, we looked at this as really swapping out of a tenant, but no real change to the overall parking dynamic. And we wouldn't expect there to be any real negative impact or effect. So, so the owners feel that this is good. This will be good for the building. It'll be a good fit for the tenant, and we'd ask the Board to approve it.
Okay. Um, before we get started, George, I do want to make one disclosure. I don't see it as a problem, though. I am general counsel to Temple Beth Shalom, which has a children's center. So that kind of makes me general counsel to the Temple Beth Shalom Children's Center. And so I do legal work on behalf of them. I don't see a conflict. I've spoken to the director of the Temple Beth Shalom Children's Center. They do not see this as a competitor. And so I, I just wanted to, to let you know of that. And, you know, if you have any objection, I'm, I'm willing to listen, but I don't, I don't see it as a problem.
No objection.
That's that. Before we get started with our comments, let me run through the correspondence I've received on this. Give me a second to get my paperwork here. We're at a conference room, it wouldn't take so long. So, um, we do have an email from Dennis Condon, the fire chief, and his comment is that the fire department is okay with these changes. I'll save the police department for last. We have an email from the DPW, and the DPW has no comment or objection to this project. We have an email from David Roach, our building inspector, and he has no issues with this proposal. We have an email from Tara Gurge of the Needham Public Health Department. And her comment is specifically an issue about whether food is being distributed and meeting the public health requirements for that, and pointing out the COVID protocols and the COVID requirements of the Commonwealth. And there was attached to the email, a copy of, of those. And that was, that was the extent of, of the health department's comments. So lastly, we do get to an email that we got from our police chief, John Schlittler. And his issues are, and I will read this. Number one, this area is very congested without factoring in traffic from the lot associated with this building. Number two, parking is at a premium in the area and there's no overflow on the street parking unless in adjacent building parking lots. His comment is this creates a separate issue for the police. Number three, he does question whether there's enough parking for all of the tenants, namely Gymboree, Snippets, the electronic store, and the preschool. Number four, the street is too dangerous to have Number four, the street is too dangerous to have parents walking kids to alternative parking location. The road is narrow and extremely congested during the day and leaves no room for on-street parking or waiting. And five, if the lot is full, there is only one way in and one way out, which may cause a traffic issue backing up into the roadway. The parking area is at a bend in the road, making sight an issue if vehicles are stacked waiting to get into the lot. So those were the police chief's comments. I am going to start. I'm going to pick up on that and just comment that I am concerned about the traffic at the intersection of Highland Avenue and Wexford Street. That is an extremely busy intersection during the day. It is my recollection. I don't know if it's still true. Probably isn't. But it's my recollection that at one time, this intersection was the most dangerous intersection in the town. And I don't know that there has been any substantial changes to it. I have driven by there during morning and evening rush hour. It's very congested. And getting in and out of Wexford Street from Highland Avenue can be problematic. And turning left from Wexford onto Highland Avenue can be problematic. It's an issue. It's a safety issue. In terms of the police chief's comments on parking, I would just say, I would, I would hope, I don't know that we can put this in our decision, but I would hope that there would be parking designated in the parking lot that's adjacent to the building so that the parents for this use would not be parking in the off-site parking lot. I think, I believe that the sidewalk on Wexford Street only extends along this building. So I see no problem at all with parking in the, in this building's parking lot and walking in. But if they, if the parents had to park and walk their toddlers and their preschoolers from an off-site lot down to this building, I can see where that would be problematic. And I would hope that the tenant and the landlord can work that out so that, so that if the off-site parking is needed, it would be the other tenants or the staff who would be using that other parking lot. Other than that, I did, I did drive by the building today to take a look at it. I saw that there was plenty of sidewalk and walkway access from the, from the lot to the building, which is great. It's just kind of the intersection itself. You know, you're adding a few more cars here. And George, perhaps you could talk to the timing of the hours of the electronics store and Snippet to confirm that that wouldn't be conflicting either so that, so that the spaces in this parking lot would be available during drop-off and pickup for the hours that's anticipated for that. I did have an issue or a question about whether you would get your license from the Early Education and Care Department of the Commonwealth because I didn't see an outdoor play space, but you've answered that question. And it was my understanding that the toddler room could only have nine children, and you've answered that question. So I appreciate that, George. So those were really the only issues that I raised, and you seem to have covered them sufficiently. Thank you. Anybody else on the planning board? Adam, I see your hand raised. Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I certainly echo the police chief's comments about public safety and any risk that is applicable here, especially given that we're dealing with kids. They take, I have a seven-year-old, and even my seven-year-old can take a minute to get in and out of the car. And I also appreciate the density and traffic and the competition for parking in that area. I will say as well that I, you know, I take my son during non-COVID times to Snippets and that location to get his hair cut. And the times that I typically do it are after school between, between 4:00 and 6:00, kind of, you know, when school's finished and before dinner. And so those were my comments with respect to the public safety. If I recall, when I drove by, there was a white fence, a short white fence, maybe five feet tall or something. I don't know if that white fence is on the neighbors. There's a two-story brick office building next door on Highland Avenue. And there's a white fence that barriers between the two buildings. Is that white fence on this property or on the other property?
So that white fence is on, just on this property?
And so you're going to connect a fence from the building to that fence? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a, there are trees, I think more than one, right at the, at the front near Highland Avenue. Will you remove the fence in order to, will you remove the tree in order to install a play structure and/or add the additional fence to close off the space?
So I'll leave Maura to answer about play structure. But as far as the fence goes, I imagine that'll be a matter of sort of fitting it in around the tree. We wouldn't want to take a tree out just to put a fence in. And there's always a way to make that work. That's kind of neat, you think? But I'll let Maura address the play structure.
Yeah, I'm actually, I don't have any plans for play structures. EEC don't really recommend them. I will have more toys because the children are younger and maybe like a playhouse. But we won't have any climbing frames or huge play structures for safety reasons.
In addition to saving the tree, perhaps for environmental purposes, saving the tree can have an additive effect for privacy as well, you know, and some degree of safety for the kids because it just creates another, you know, couple of feet of separation between anyone on the street and the kids in the play area. So those were my comments and questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
If I can, Adam, I just can answer so that the tree in front in particular looks like, looks like that's actually set back a little bit from the end of the building. So shouldn't be any issue at all avoiding that with the fence. And then I think the one in the back is further beyond as well. So it doesn't look like there'd be any, any real challenge putting the fence, a little section of fence in with the existing trees.
I appreciate that. I couldn't tell. I didn't have a chance to get out of my car and measure the distance. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Would anybody else, members of the board, have any comments or any questions?
I have a question. How are you going to access the play area from the interior? Is there a door on the side of the building to directly access the play area?
So if I can share my screen again, I'll show you that the door is actually on the end of the building, but it's right near the play area. So. Okay, so the play area would be right in here, basically. And you can see the door is right here. So they simply have to come out the door and then just simply walk right around the corner of the building.
George, is the door on Highland Avenue or on Wexford?
So it's actually on neither. It opens to the, so this is Highland Avenue out here.
Okay.
And this is Wexford out here.
Got it.
And then this is, the parking area is back in here. So the door actually, I mean, there is a door that goes to Highland Avenue, but this is the door that'll be used. So this is the door that the children will come out of here and then be able to go right into the play area without having to go out on Highland Avenue or on Wexford or anything like that.
Well, that's good because that's also the door then for the pickup and drop-off.
Right, exactly.
That goes right to the parking area.
Right. There is an existing bike rack that might have to be moved over a little bit. But that's, again, that's one of those things that's an easy, easy adjustment.
George, do you know the hours of Snippets and the electronics store?
So I do. And this is actually one of the advantages of having meetings with Zoom and you have full access to technology, right? So the you break, I fix. Their hours are 10 to 5. And Snippets, from what I can find, because of course in COVID, they are by appointment only. They're semi-closed. But what I can find, it looks like they're 10 to 6. So certainly in the morning drop-off, there's no conflict whatsoever. They're obviously open during the pickup, but the pickup time is more spread. So you wouldn't expect to have any real conflict there. And again, you know, this, the Huntington Learning Center had similar pickup times and similar activity, you know, towards the end of the day and didn't have any conflict with the users that were there. So I wouldn't expect this tenant to have any either because it's a similar kind of traffic pattern. And as a side note, I also like just mentioned too on a couple of the, you know, some of the concerns, it's always good to think about safety. Some of the points that Chief Schlittler raises are some of the things that were taken into consideration back in 2008 when the building was built. And in fact, when the building was approved back then, there were several tweaks and twists to the parking that had to be done to get the approval of police and fire and engineering at that time. So some of that stuff was looked at. And so one of the things, for example, was having the, you know, having the bulk of the parking coming off further down Wexford as opposed to having it come up closer to the intersection to make it better in terms of impact on Wexford. So, but all that, that's all, you know, sort of existing condition, and we're not changing any of that. And we're really, the drop-off and pickup isn't materially different other than the drop-off being a little earlier than Huntington. It's really the same kind of thing. So the concern is very well appreciated. It's, you know, we're mindful of it as well. But we really don't think that this is going to present any substantial problem or challenge to safety in that area that any different than anything else has been for the last 10-plus years.
Question, George. George, can you comment on whether you or the applicant would have any problem with a condition in a decision that picks up on an earlier comment that the off-site available parking would be used by all staff?
That's actually used for employees and staff now as it is. So I, and I'm not sure if that was in one of the prior decisions, but that was the, in the very beginning, when those spaces were referenced and sort of allocated, that was the idea because you don't really want customers walking down Wexford Street. You know, that's, that's not really the idea. The idea was to have the staff park down there, the employees park down there. So that's already how it is. So I don't think that would be any problem. I would actually look to Peter and John if they, you know, if they would have any issue with that. But I wouldn't expect there to be any problem.
Would Peter or John wish to comment on that?
That's, that's actually how it works right now. We pretty much require all our tenants to park in the other parking spots so we have the full parking lot just for the employees, I mean, for the customers of the building.
In fact, if I may say that in the lease, it states that failure to park, which is only a stone's throw away, that parking lot, failure to park there, the lease can be broken. So we're very strict about parking in the lot. I think Lee and maybe a couple of you were there when we first decided to build that building. And the board worked with us to get, so we can rent few spaces down the street. However, I said in a very short time, we are going to buy a lot and we'll have deeded parking for our building. And again, in our leases, it states that they must park there. Failure to do that will be breaking the lease, and they do that. The other thing I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, we or the state invested millions of dollars in that area to have new access from Kendrick Street. They took away about four feet of our sidewalk so they can make a way so that, and there's a light now going to Wexford Street. So the, the traffic flow now, I am happy to say, is much, much better because of the lights. There's a light that you can, you can come from the restaurant depot area where you bang a left and you go to the highway. Before, they had to take a right, and they used to come to Wexford Street, and then they turned around and come back. So I'm happy to say with all those millions of dollars, it has made a big difference in the floor parking. Yes, it's a busy area. And you know what? I like busy areas. Okay? That's our success. If we're concerned about busy areas, we wouldn't be building all kinds of things. So, and the other thing I want to say is that we own two buildings in Needham, one in Needham Center and one 225. One we own for over 35 years. We never have had a policeman come to complain. We've never had a problem. We manage our business, and if I have to be out there directing traffic, I will direct traffic if that's what it means. But we really don't need it because, again, for the times, they're different. Maura, on the other hand, just to say very quickly, she's been a client of mine in West Roxbury. That's one of my buildings. She's a wonderful operator. She does a great job with children, and she will be a wonderful addition to my building, but also to the town. So I would appreciate your support. It's not easy to get tenants these days and good tenants. We've had a vacancy for over a year and a half, so I please would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more question.
Sure.
On the off-site parking spots, just to follow up on that, do I understand that you have five spots and they're all deeded spots?
We have a whole parking lot there.
That you own. You don't rent?
We own the parking lot, and it's dedicated. There's five spots. We could do seven spots for a tenant if we have, if we want to. Okay? We have, we have dedicated spaces for every tenant based on their needs. Three spaces, spaces in tandem, so that it doesn't really matter how many employees they have. We have enough parking for them.
Yeah, and I just wanted to focus on whether you are leasing those spaces, whether you actually own it. So I got my.
We own it, and it's ours, and it's dedicated. And again, I promised the planning board when I bought, when I built a building that very soon, not, I'm not going to be renting spaces. I'm going to own spaces. So we own it. It's only a stone's throw away. And all the tenants, employees, park in the lot.
All right, thank you.
So that way, our spaces on the building are only for the use of the clients.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any comments or questions?
Yes, if I may.
All right.
Start with a procedural question. Did we have a motion to waive the reading of the notice?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did. Okay. And then I also had the concern about the off-site parking spaces and whether we could have a condition in our decision to require that all of the employees park in the off-site. And the answers I'm getting from Mr. Gianopolis to others' comments is that, yes, we could have that decision. He has sufficient parking to make that a requirement of the lease. So that's, that's good. I guess the issue that I'm left with is I do see the traffic as being different from that generated by Huntington Learning Center because there is a morning peak hour traffic involved with the dropping off of the children here. And I am very concerned about the traffic safety at that intersection. I do have a question, and I'm not sure if we know the answer to it. I know that very shortly to begin, our big improvements to Highland Avenue, that is a state highway, and the improvements are funded by the state. All I've seen done thus far is some utility work on the opposite side of the highway. But I don't know if perhaps our planning director knows if any, I mean, Mr. Gianopolis mentioned that the light that was put in a few years back has helped traffic movement in the area. But for example, is there to be a light at the corner of Wexford and Highland? Lee, Ms. Moon is shaking her head. No, there is not to be such a light with this improvement. Is there going to be any improvement, different traffic lanes in that area that would alleviate the traffic somewhat?
I understand that a left turn lane is planned into the gas station, and I believe that a left turn lane is also planned into, into. And I believe that a left turn lane is also planned into, into Wexford Street. And then there's going to be a raised kind of bike lanes on both sides of the, of the street. The project was supposed to go out to bid in June of this year. It's been delayed. The construction schedule was, was supposed to start in September of this year. But again, the bid documents didn't go out in June. And so I'm not sure what the schedule is going to be going forward.
But the improvements, as far as you know, would, would be a left turn lane going eastbound on Highland?
Into, into the gas station and into Wexford Street.
Okay. And then there will be bike paths on, on both sides of Highland?
On both sides, a raised bikeway.
All right. Well, the left turn lane should help the situation somewhat. And it could be that timing of the lights that exist could help traffic movement in that vicinity. All right. And so those are my, my question. I'll leave it at that on that. But I do, I do want to make the point that I do think the traffic is different for, from Huntington Learning Center in that there would be more at the, at the morning peak hour. On the numbers of children that are now nine toddlers and 10 preschool age children, I was unclear and press, press is standing again here and respond whether this is temporary as a result of the restrictions imposed by the state at this time of the COVID-19? Or if this is to be, I mean, the permanent number of children that we're approving? We're not expecting you to come back in six months and say, well, no, we want it to be 12 or whatever. Please respond to that question?
No, that is the EEC regulations. That hasn't changed.
I see. So it's not, it's not a response to the current COVID situation? That is the state agency that regulates daycare centers. And that for the square footage you have, that's the number of children they would allow. Is that correct?
I actually think it's actually, the space is bigger. So we have plenty of room for 19.
All right, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Ted, do you have any, do you have any questions?
No comments, no questions. Thank you.
Paul, just a quick point.
Marty, go ahead.
I just, in the notes that I was taking when George was giving his presentation, I think you misspoke, George. You said there were 11,009 square feet. I think you meant 1,109.
Yes, that's correct.
To be clear. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will look to see if there are any hands raised among the attendees or any others who are here from the public. I, I don't see any hands raised under, under the participants. And I don't see any hands being raised visually. So I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's call the roll. Marty?
Yes.
Jean McKnight?
Yes.
Ted Owens?
Yes.
Adam Block?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So it's unanimous. So the hearing is closed. Before we proceed, George, did you have an opportunity to read the draft decision that was presented to us?
I did, and I had made some edits to it with Lee. One, one section that I did not change in the decision is the, the part with respect to the use. As I, as I indicated in the presentation, you know, it's our position that this is an exempt use. I think the decision is written with it as a special permit use. We had filed in the alternative saying we thought it was exempt, but if the board didn't agree with that, that it's permitted or can be permitted by special permit. But, so I didn't change that in the decision, but I would actually, you know, upon further reflection and review, stress that it's our position that it's an exempt use and not a special permit use.
Yes, that, that was one of my comments that I was planning to bring up when we discuss the decision because I agree with you. I believe that this is, this is a use as of right. And so I'm going to propose that we, that we change the decision to reflect that instead of a special, special permit use. But of course, I'm only one vote out of five. And I did have some other comments and Marty made the comment about having, having a specific provision, adding a provision about the parking spaces that the staff be required in our decision, not just in the leases, to require that the staff park off-site and that the adjacent parking lot be reserved for customers. And so I don't know if you want to hang around to hear our comments. I don't remember what I had until I look at my notes when we actually get to it. So. But I leave that to you. So we've closed the hearing. Lee, should we consider the decision now? We're actually, we're running kind of late. Perhaps we should have the second hearing and then, and then go over the draft decisions after we've had the second hearing.
However you prefer to, to manage it.
Well, I don't want to keep the people here from the second hearing longer than they need to be. So why, why don't we move on to the second hearing? And then we'll discuss the draft decisions after we've had the second hearing. So this brings us to the next item on the agenda. I need to get my copy of the agenda in front of me so that I can read it. This is going to be, okay. So this is a public hearing that was originally scheduled for 7:30 for Major Project Site Plan Review Number 2020-02 from Corbin Properties LLC. The petitioner for the property located at 330 Reservoir Street, Needham, Massachusetts. Again, this is a public hearing, so it has been noticed and published. And the first order of business, I will entertain a, a motion to waive the reading of the notice.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Marty Jacobs?
Yes.
Jean McKnight?
Come on. Yes.
Ted Owens?
Yes.
Adam Block?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that's unanimous. So I am turning the hearing over to a proponent, Shuang Meng. Is that, are you presenting?
Yeah.
Great.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shuang. I'm the owner of Star Fencing Academy. And first of all, let me introduce the sport of fencing. I'm not sure you know this is spar, but we also call it a store game. So it has three weapons. The foil, the saber, and then the ipay. So, and all three weapons are different. You hit a different heavier. This is Olympic sport. And so also the two fencers are moving back and forth by six, six by 14, 44 feet of strip. So I, both my husband and I, we were, we come from China. So I moved to Boston 10 years ago. And since we moved to here, we have been trained the top of fencers at the national ranking include number first, you use 10 fencers in the whole USA. Number first, use 12 fencers in the USA. And the number first in top, in use 16 fencers in the whole USA. And the one of our athlete, she, he just made a 2020 cadet USA national team. And then he gonna represent the USA team to attend the world championships in 2020. So I would like to share a screen and let you see what is a real fencing in the how fencers fence on the 14 meters of strip.
Right ahead.
Okay. So this kid, his name Daniel Zhang. This is July challenge this year, 2019 July challenge. So, and then this is the about, this is the fencing. Two fencers fence on the stage is 14 meters, 44 feet long. And they use the sword. They move back and forth. On the left, this is my student. His name is Daniel. So he was the youngest offender to win the national champion when he was 14 years old. And this is another. I also wanted to share this with you. Okay, so this is the USA team. This is in, I think it's in Spain. The national, the USA team got a second place. And then this is Daniel Zhang, 14 years old. The Daniel Zhang came home with the U20 gold immense foil today to win the entire field of 300 competitors. This is my husband, Coach Kai Zhao. And I was with him at Junior World Cup. He also finished the top eight at Junior World Cups. And then this is also our student. He also the national finalist. And then they represented USA, attended Junior World Cup there. And then this is our club where we are right now. And then this is our coach Kai Zhao, our coach Shang Qiao. And then this is the USA team. We got many medals at national and the international competitions. This is a USA fencing reported about Daniel. So our student, this kid, he lives in Needham. And he also national finalist offender. And then Darren. So this is the USA fencing, fencing national team in 2020. But unfortunately, because of coronavirus, the competition pulls upon the next year. But only three fencers represent a USA fencing team to the international championships. And this is a junior team and this is a cadet team. Daniel Zhang ranking number one to represent the USA for the 2020 month's foil cadet world team. Okay, so this is the screen I wanted to share with you. I have, I have been, since I was 80 years old, I won the more than 14 national titles when I was in China. I represented China for both the junior national team and the senior national team. The same for my husband. So our class, we have a different classes. We have different levels. So the beginner class, we call it the youth class. We have two coaches with 12 students. And the next level is a pre-competitive class. Again, we have about 12 to 15 kids with two coaches. And then the next level who has, who needed to compete at the national and regional competition, we call it a youth competitive class. In this class, kids have to be compete at a regional and the national competition. And then the highest level class, we call it a junior competitive class, which is you see Daniel, Darren, some of high-level fencers there. This is a class designed for who compete in a national and the international competitions. So our working hour is from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. From 3:00 PM to 4:30 PM, it's pretty much just for private license. Private license is in-person license, coach give you license one to one, one student with one coach. And from 4:30, we start a group of class. The youth class, beginner class, we have one hour class from 4:30 to 5:30. That's called a beginner class, youth class. And the pre-competitive class is a one hour and a half. It's from 5:00 to 6:30. And then the youth competitive class is from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. And then we also have an hour until 9 o'clock to give you some private licenses if they need it. And then the junior competitive, it's in different day. We have like Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday for three classes. And the Monday, Wednesday, Friday for three classes. So the parking is shouldn't be a problem. Scott gives us eight parking, private parking space. And then in the reservoir, there's a lot many of street parking that parents can park there. Yeah, that's pretty much I want to see.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shuang. This is Scott Ravelson. I'm the owner or manager of Corbin Properties. Is it appropriate for me to say something?
Absolutely.
Great. Well, we're very, very excited about this fencing school. I think it's the perfect use for the neighborhood. It's a perfect complement for B5 Fitness, which is it next door at 322 Reservoir. As also a perfect complement to a very upscale dance studio that's been in the building for, both of those tenants have been in the building for probably eight or nine years. It attracts an upscale clientele from Needham and the surrounding towns. One thing that was exciting to me was when I met Shuang and Kai is that they're transitioning from teaching in Cambridge to growing a family and wanting to settle in our town or in a surrounding town, depending on what housing they find. So that not only are they going to be part of our business community, but they're also going to be part of our community. I think from a use standpoint and parking demand, it's beyond perfect. They are replacing a tenant that was advanced auto parts that had the same space that was open for retail customers and wholesale distribution. And which was putting parking, much higher parking demand. This is terrific in that their lease, the Star Fencing lease does not allow any parking anywhere until after 2:30. And their lease also restricts the number of students that they can have at the facility between three and five to only private classes with one coach and one student, which would be a maximum of three students and a maximum of three coaches. So basically.
So the private, sorry, the private lesson is from 3:00 to 4:30.
Right.
Yeah. And from 4:30, we're gonna start a group class. So just to clear by that.
Yep, thank you very much. Anyway. So when there will be larger classes, the neighborhood is basically void of parking. Most of the industrial use in my buildings and Janelle Co. and across the street, everything starts at 6:00 in the morning. six in the morning, seven in the morning, and everyone's really leaving at around three. So it's a perfect use as far as the, for, for the parking. Anyway. I don't have much more to say. It's very, uh, very, very minor construction that they'll be doing. It's open spaces with basic lines that are drawn for the, for the fencing aisles. And really, that's about all I have to say. We're very excited.
Good, thank you very much. Um, I really don't have any questions or comments. I think this, this sounds like a, a very good use for this location. And I'm, I'm just curious though, are you moving your academy to this location or is this a, a second location? Uh, in conjunction with, with your current location?
Uh, this is a new business. I have, I worked at a Boston Fencing Club for about ten years. I'm the director there, the program, the program director there. And I have many experiences to, I, I know how to run a club. So this is, that's why both my husband and I decided that you start our new business.
So you're starting your own academy?
Yes.
After working for others?
Yes.
Well, I think that's very exciting.
Yeah, it is. We have confidence to build to the new club, new academy, you know, to be great. The reason I find this space is because I have so many students live in Needham. Yeah, and then they, they were great. And I have a lot of parents support us. You know, some of them helped me to find this location. I have many students living in Needham, you mean Walsley, Western, you know, they're all closer to this location. So it's, yeah, very excited.
Good, thank you. That's all that I have. Are there any other members of the planning board who have any questions or comments? Uh, Jean McKnight has her hand raised. Go ahead, Jean.
Yes, I, I just want to clarify the parking requirement as compared with the parking provided. Reading the memorandum from the applicant zoning parking requirements with a number of students, et cetera. It says it would be fifteen spaces. But the number of spaces provided on site excuse me, is only eight. Are there more spaces available on site for this use? Why is the number of spaces limited to eight? I asked that of, of the owner, I, I guess.
Jean, the reason for that is basically for safety purposes. We have a hundred and two spaces, but they're mostly in the rear of the building. So we have given this, the academy eight parking spaces that are directly in front of the building. So they end along the side of the building. Unfortunately, I don't have any video, I can only have audio tonight, so I can't show you, but I did. There is a site plan and they are actually numbered spaces and attached to the lease. We felt that the parking uh, on the street would be better because to give them spaces in the rear of the building, there would be a safety issue of them walking the children down that alley, which we have commercial vehicles coming and going. So the street parking at this time, anytime after three, they're, they're almost all open. So basically, um, that was the reason.
A follow-up question for clarification. You mentioned five spaces. And you say they're in addition to the eight. And you say that those five spaces on the street, but they're only available for parking after five PM. Do you mean by on the street, do you mean these are within the public way, within reservoir street? There are parking spaces?
No.
That are, have signs, you can't park there till five PM or what do you mean?
I think the language I used was reflective of the language that planning and zoning have required in the past where we very tightly control the amount. In choosing our tenants, we control the time and the amount of parking that can be used because of the limitations in the neighborhood. And so these are more it's just a reflection of the language that I'm required to state in my three twenty-two leases. So I mirrored it in my three thirty leases. But we know that during a weekend out of a hundred of my spaces and forty parking spaces that are on the street, striped spaces that I'm responsible for.
Excuse me, what do you mean you're responsible for them if they are on the street? How are you responsible for them?
I, I don't know the decision that's recorded at the registry of deeds, but my responsibility is to plow and maintain and stripe about twenty parking spaces. That's just off the top of my head. And that decision was, I think it was when the building was owned by Petrini, I think it is. Um, so I'm just responsible. So even though they're open to the public, I maintain them. We're in a private street, so Janelco and I
Oh, it's a private way?
Yeah, it's a private street. We paved, we paved the street, we striped the, and I'm responsible to plow the street. So, um, that's why, so we're very, you know, I'm very conscious of trying to control the parking so that my neighbors can use parking. I think Janelco has twenty thousand square feet and he only has eight parking spaces. So basically we're all good neighbors. And so I basically choose my tenants based on keeping the parking very limited.
Okay, well, the main thing is I now understand this is private ways. So now I understand why it is that the owners control it rather than the town. Okay. Um, and I, and now I just have a quick question for Schwang man. I assume, and the way this is written, I think confirms that, that your LLC is a for-profit corporation, organized for profit. It's not a nonprofit school.
It's not a nonprofit.
Yes, that's what I thought. So therefore that is why a, a special permit is needed under our zone, right? Um. Okay. That's, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Jean. Uh, is there anybody else among the planning board members who have any, any comments or questions? Yes, Marty?
Cool, just a quick question. Are all of your students under the age of twenty?
Um, so our age starts six, the youngest offender start at six years old. So from six, cause the USA fencing competition goes by age. So they have Y ten, Y ten competition, which is fencers under ten years old, Y ten, Y twelve, Y fourteen, cadet is sixteen, and then junior and senior. So our students, I have many students aged from six to eighteen. And then I also have college students. So some of, cause fencing is so fencing is NCAA, we, you know, and all colleges recruit good offenders to represent a good school to attend NCAA competition. I have fencers from Brandeis, Boston College, Harvard, and MIT come to here to fence with us. So this we call the second degree is a college offenders. And then we also have adult class for who is, you know, forty, forty, fifty, the oldest of my student, he is seventy years old. Yeah, we have different ages offender, yeah.
Okay.
And then we teach them different skills for their age.
And Schwang, you promised me that you would have a special class for landlords and planning board members, right?
For sure.
If we don't get along, we'll, we'll be able to resolve our issues in class, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I'm about to turn seventy, so uh, maybe too old for you.
No, we have an eighty, we call eighty national competition, yeah.
My, my husband and my stepdaughter took up fencing about ten years ago. She had spent a year in Russia, post-college. And I gather fencing was popular in Russia and she came back with an interest in, in doing it. And so they did that for a couple of years. It had a very good exercise, something a father and daughter could do together. It's lovely.
Russia national team is very strong. They are always our opponent when I was at the national team, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Ted, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not.
Adam?
No, I do not.
Very good, then, um, I am looking at the attendees and the panelists on the participant's screen and I don't see any hands raised there. Let me give it a few seconds to make sure that nobody's about to raise a hand. So I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Oh, before I do that, I'm sorry. I do have a bit, a bit of housekeeping. We do have some comment from the town. So let me read them into the record. We have an email from Dennis Condon, our chief of the fire department. And he is okay with this petition. We have an email from John Schlittler, our police chief. He has no issues with the three thirty reservoir street petition. We have an email from Tony Delgazo of the DPW, the DPW has no comments or objections to this project. We have an email from David Roach, our building inspector. He has no issues with this proposal. And lastly, we have an email from Tara Gurge who, similar to the prior hearing, has the two comments about if there's going to be retail food, you have to meet the board of health requirements and pointing out the state's COVID nineteen protocols and I believe her email had attached to it the state COVID nineteen emergency order and the, and the protocols. So now that I've read those into the record, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing, Mr. Chair.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the roll call vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, unanimous. So that closes the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And we will now discuss the draft decisions that we have. Let's start with the draft decision for two twenty-five Highland Avenue. Let me go through quickly with my comments. First of all, the draft on page one anticipated that Jean McKnight would be chairing. So that has to be corrected to reflect that I am chairing the meeting tonight. Double sided, so I have to remember to flip over the page to see if there's anything else. Okay, I had originally circled paragraph one point nine about traffic, but I think my, I, I think my questions have been answered on traffic and so I'm satisfied with section one point nine. Section one point ten talks about parking and perhaps that is where we might want to add some language as was suggested by, by Marty about parking off-site being being for the staff so that the parking onsite would be available for, for the customers. On the vote, I think, um, as I said, I am in agreement with Mr. Jenta about this being a use as of right and so we would have to change the language in the vote about uh, the special permit being granted.
I agree with that, by the way.
Thank you.
And so do I.
So we already, yeah.
As do I.
Thank you. So, Adam, you want to make it unanimous?
I do.
Thank you. So, uh, so we'll change that language and anywhere else where it appears, Lee. Now, um, so I do notice and I want to point out George in section three point four, the board retaining jurisdiction with regard to the number of children participating in the classes and requiring additional lots of parking as, as necessary as, as circumstances warrant. Lee in section three point seven, you misspell Alston. There were two L's in Alston. It appears twice. Lee, this is a provision that talks about requiring that that the learning tree not transfer not transfer their license and or not transfer the permit basically. And we set out what, what that constitutes. And I think we may have discussed this before and, and I don't know if, if it's worth changing now and I'll leave it up to the other, to the other board members. But, um, under, under Massachusetts law, under the hood dairy case, a transfer of ownership by a corporation or an LLC to new owners where the LLC is, is, is still the tenant and is still the operator is not considered a transfer. Is not legally a transfer. I would like to add language that states that if the, if the ownership interests of Learning Tree Preschool, Inc. Or I guess the stock, the stock holdings, since it's a corporation, are transferred such that the current owners do not control at least fifty percent of the voting of the stock, then that's considered a transfer and would be in violation of, of our 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 permitting here. And that would similarly, I'll raise it again, but that would similarly apply for for the, for the fencing. But as I said, I, I will, I will open that up to discussion by the other board members as to whether they see that change being worth making or making in the future and not worrying about it now.
I would make it.
In section in section three point one two, uh, it says, in addition to the provisions of this approval, the petitioner must comply with all requirements of all state, federal and local boards. And then it has a list of some of them, building inspector, fire department, et cetera. I would like to add the Department of Early Education and Care to that list. So that that's explicit. And those are my comments. The decision. So I open it up to other board members as to any comments and changes that they have. Marty?
I, I just, I just think we have to be sure that wherever the numbers of anticipated students have changed, as we've been told tonight, that that's reflected in the decision as well.
Absolutely. I know that there are places that reflected its thirteen students. I know that there are places that reflected it's 13 students in the toddler program. And that, that has to be reduced to nine. I think that's the only, the only change there.
I think it's, I think when you change the students, I think the staff went down by one and the parking. And the parking calculation needs to be changed as a function of what was presented tonight. I think also we need to have a plan modification that calls out the applicant showing how the play area is actually going to be presented on the site plan.
Yeah. Good point.
So George and Lee, perhaps we could get a second draft. And George, would it be okay with you if we defer, if we deferred voting on this until the next meeting on the 21st? So that we can review the changes and you can get the revised plan to us?
Well, I would love to have the vote tonight, at least on the relief. Certainly, given the changes to the decision, I can understand that.
I think, I don't see a problem with that. We have to take a look at the wording of the vote to make sure that it's a use by right instead of special permit and revise that before we take the actual vote. But I think that would be okay.
Well, once, once the vote on this is, you know, is taken, then we have 14 days to file the decision.
Ah, that's kind of cutting it close, George.
Well, it doesn't.
Yeah, so I'm going to ask that we defer the vote until the 21st also. But I think you can get a sense of the board tonight that it will probably be favorable. I can't make, I've learned after, after 45 years of practicing law to never make promises, to be very careful how I say, but I'll say, you know, it looks, it looks good. Yes, Jean?
Yes, I had a couple more beyond your comments, which I agree with completely on the decision. Section 1.7, in the second paragraph, which is at the top of page four, it mentions, "In addition to the 22 spaces available onsite, another five spaces are available offsite." We've gotten some clarification from Mr. Gianakopoulos, that fact that these are spaces on land he owns or his corporation owns. And I'd like to have the decision in the finding section say where these spaces are. You know, they're on parcel, whatever, just to identify the location of the spaces. Then in section 1.9, I did present my view that the, the, the traffic pattern is changing in that there is more traffic during the morning peak hour. And it's worded now to say, "Whereas only interior building modifications are proposed, existing traffic patterns are not expected to be affected in a material way." I really think that sentence doesn't really make sense in this context because it's the change of use that involves changes in the time of the use of the building that are changing the traffic patterns. And I think we just need to clarify that in that section. In section 1.10, it talks about the petitioner seeking a waiver of an additional two parking spaces. It seems that that issue has been resolved by lowering, as was said before, the number of staff and the number of students so that a waiver of an additional two parking spaces is no longer needed. And that would need to be changed. Let me just go to the, and I think then with regard to the offsite parking, I think we want to have something very specific in the conditions and limitations. Once we define where that parking is and make sure we have a limiting condition.
George, can you provide the information that Jean's requested about the offsite parking?
Yes, it's, actually, I think it's, Peter could correct me, but I think it's 43 Wexford is the address.
And just one more.
Yes.
Question. The site plan, special permit amendment shall lapse on July 2nd, 2022. That's a very long time. Is that an exceptionally long period of time for the special permit to lapse if substantial use hasn't occurred?
The statute allows for the two-year window, and we've always, we've always mirrored the statute in our decisions.
Okay, so that's nothing unusual about that. Okay. All right, those are my comments.
Anybody else? Yes, Adam?
You were referring to a change of owner, an effect on the change of ownership with respect to either of the tenants.
Yep.
You had mentioned 50%. Did you mean 51% or are you satisfied?
Well, I said, I said, I said more than 50%. So that, so that they retain more than 50%.
Okay.
You know, if, if they want to have, if they want to bring in minority owners, you know, I wouldn't consider that to be a change of ownership. But if they lose control of the corporation by having less, by not having 50, more than 50% control, I would consider that to be a change of ownership.
I think I misunderstood. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, so Lee, you'll work with George on, on making.
I'll advise the draft to reflect the discussion tonight.
Great, thank you. So are we ready to move on to review of the decision for 330 Riverside? Let's get my copy of that. I don't believe I had any, any comments to that one. Let me take a look. Again, changing, changing is reflected, I chaired the meeting. You don't have substantial changes. We will be able to, to take the vote tonight, I believe. Lee, you had a question at section 3.8A about not being sure whether they're going to have a build-out requiring permits. And yeah, those were, that was it that I called, and that I didn't have any comments or changes. Any other board members have any comments or changes for the 330 Reservoir? Jean?
Not necessarily, but I just want to make sure. In the parking analysis that's presented in the decision, the total parking requirement for the whole building, 63 spaces, premises contains a total of 102. Therefore, there'll be a surplus of 39. And in the relief that's sought and in the granting paragraph for the relief, there is no parking waiver. But I did hear in the discussion something about this tenant being limited to eight spaces. And then the additional five that are on the private way. If, if this, if this tenant's requirement is for more than eight spaces, which I think it is, it's 15 spaces. I want to make sure that they can use any part of the parking lot that they, that the people coming there choose to use. It's not in the decision that, that they're limited, but it was in the discussion somehow that they're limited. Would that be clarified?
Scott, can you clarify that? That they do have access to parking in the rear parking lot?
Yeah, but I think, I think this is key. I think that there is always an issue on Reservoir Street during the daytime. So I think having very defined parking limitations in the lease, which is something that I've been trained to do by the board for my building next door, it's clear that parking is not to be abused. It's an unspoken between the tenant and the landlord, even though it says in the lease that they are not to park in other tenant's spaces. They're not to block passageways, they're not to, meaning there's no outside storage. It's sort of with a wink that says, obviously, after 5 o'clock, when there's nobody parking in the neighborhood, they can pretty much park anywhere. So there's not going to be a problem parking. But basically, we wanted to make sure that it's clear that, no, they can't, they can't have 30 cars parked here, 15 cars parked here at 8:00 in the morning. It's from 2:30 on, and we don't want to have overnight parking. So we limited it to 10 o'clock at night, meaning it's their last class, ends at nine. So that gives them an hour, you know, so that, but I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty clear. When Gianaco, I mean, there's no one in the neighborhood after 3:30, 4, you know, let's say 5 o'clock. I mean, the dance studio is, is there and some people will be working out. But we have plenty of parking.
Okay, Scott, let me try to clarify the issue. And Jean, please chime in if I don't quite say this the way you have in mind. But by the calculations that are presented and that we're deciding on, there's a requirement under our bylaws that this, this tenant have access to 15 spaces. That's the number of spaces that are required. We are not issuing a parking waiver. So that we need to know that there are 15 spaces available to this tenant. We don't need to know exactly where they are. They don't need to be the eight spaces in front. They could be 15 spaces in back. They can be eight spaces in front and, and seven, seven undesigned spaces that are available to all of your tenants in the back. As long as there are 15 spaces on the property or on the private way that we know, because we're not issuing a parking waiver, are available to this tenant. And all that we're asking is, I think Jean is asking this, do we have the assurance that there are 15 spaces that are available to this tenant? Whether they're designated for the tenant or unallocated among all of the tenants, that there are 15 spaces available?
Yes, that was clearly stated in my certification. Shows a surplus parking, unused parking of 39.53 spaces.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. That clarifies exactly what we need to have clarified.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Anything else, board members?
I think there was a correction that was made tonight in terms of when the individual classes or the one-on-one fencing courses were going to be held. And that's going to be running between, I think, 3:00 and 4:30, not 3:00 and 5:00. So that needs to be changed.
Okay. So Lee, with those changes, are we ready to take the vote now? Or would you rather that we deferred it until the 21st?
I think we're fine to take it, the vote tonight.
So I think, board members, you'll find the vote in the middle of page four. If I could have someone make a motion to grant the, the relief as stated on page four. I think should do it.
I will. I'll try it. I vote that the board vote in favor of the requested major project site plan review special permit under section 7.4 of the Needham zoning bylaw. Also in favor of the requested spite special permit under section 3.2.1 for a private school, nursery, or kindergarten, not otherwise classified under 3.2.5.1 in the industrial zoning district. And also in favor of the requested special permit under section 3.2.1 for more than one non-residential use on a lot, subject to, and with the benefit of plan modifications, conditions, and limitations to be set forth in the draft decision.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, it's unanimous. So we have a motion to adopt the draft decision with the changes discussed this evening. Lee, are you ready for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, it's unanimous. I think I successfully used the same rotation for every vote. Don't take it as meaning anything. It was totally arbitrary, but I just wanted to be consistent for the evening.
Thank you, thank you from Scott and from Shuang.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Best of luck with the new venture.
Yes, and welcome to the world of entrepreneurship.
Thank you.
So now I need to find my agenda again. Here we are. So Board of Appeals decisions. There were three matters that were presented to us for the upcoming Board of Appeals meeting.
Paul, could I just mention something? Ms. Shuang Meng?
Yes.
I see is still with us, as is Mara Dennington. You're perfectly welcome to stay on the line, but you don't have to.
Oh, okay, sure. Thank you, thank you. Bye.
And so you, you folks don't need the landlord either, correct?
No, we don't. Thank you, Scott.
I have to go start practicing my fencing in order to, we've made a deal about fencing and rent. So basically, I have to win in order to collect the rent. See you. Thank you again, everybody. Thanks.
I would talk to your lawyer who drafted the lease there, Scott.
Unfortunately, like everything else, I drafted the lease. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's quite hard. No, thank you, Marty. So I had no comments for any of these three. So I'm just going to open all three of them to, to the board to, to ask if any of you had any, any issues or any comments.
Can you see me? I was trying to look for some of the pages. And let me get, get back to the visual here. I took a walk by 249 Garden Street to confirm that indeed, this is the house that my husband Steve and I engaged an architect to try to see how feasible it was to renovate it. It's certainly, it's clearly an existing two-family, but it's kind of a strange layout inside. And now I see it's going to be torn down and a side-by-side two-family built. It seems to me that's a reasonable reconstruction of that property. It is, and all I wanted to say is I know the property well. I'm glad to see that it's going to be fixed up and, and looking nice.
Thank you, Jean. Any other comments?
I'll move no comment and all free.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
For the vote?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So there's no comment for all three, Lee. I think that's the fastest we've ever disposed of the Board of Appeals.
I just had to tell my story.
I just had to tell my story.
Next item on the agenda is minutes. Jean, I turn to you.
Yes, yes, I am all set here. I move that we accept the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty, and May fifth, twenty twenty, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Block.
If I was not a, a member of the planning board at that time, should I abstain from voting in those minutes?
Yes, you should. Thank you for asking. Any further discussion? Then I will call the roll. Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens? He said yes, even though he was muted.
I did, I said yes.
Mr. Block, abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you, and I'm a yes, so it's a four to nothing unanimous vote. Were those the only minutes that were in front of us?
There were, there were two sets of draft minutes sent, sent out yesterday afternoon. I submitted some markups, but they'll be considered at the next meeting. And of course, everybody should take a look at them, see what they think.
Very good. A report from the planning director. Lee?
Well, I'll start it out, and I think I'm going to ask Marty and Adam to participate in this since we, they participated in a meeting. The first, my first update is that there was a meeting this morning of a working group of folks looking at the Highway Commercial One rezoning initiative. The group, and you know, entailed two representatives from the Board of Selectmen, two representatives from the Finance Committee, and two representatives from this board. Marty and Adam participated to talk about new, you know, next steps on moving that rezoning along. I think the primary question was, how do we deal with the traffic issue? We had originally planned, I think, as you all know, to do a new traffic study and to collect all new data, and then to do modelings of a number of different redevelopment scenarios at the property, so that we could look at how much development the property could support and still retain the existing level of services at some key intersections, particularly at Highland and Gould, and Gould and Central. And now that we don't really have that as a possibility because of COVID, and it's probably going to be quite a while before traffic goes back to its pre-existing level, if it, if ever. The question was, what should next steps look like? And I think the consensus that came out of this was, we should probably take the data, there is some new data. We, we do have some state data that was collected prior to COVID, after Adeline went online. And the town, I think, about a month before everything fell apart, took some counts at Gould and Central. So I think the group felt that it made sense to go back to the traffic consultant that we had gotten the original proposal from to do the modeling work for us under a comprehensive study and see if we could use this existing data, how that might look, how they're currently approaching doing traffic studies in this environment. And to come up with a new scope of services that would then be reviewed by the entire group at a meeting to be held either next week or the week after. So that's just a kind of a recap overview. And I asked Marty and Adam to make a contribution too, if, if there are things that they think are important to add.
There were a couple of things that I can add. For the select board this time, it was, it was Matt and Mary Ann. And from FinCom, it's Barry Kaufman and John Connolly. And there was a brief discussion about whether or not it made sense to re-envision an application of residential use in the site. But it, there did seem to be consensus that commercial would remain mostly office with some retail. We didn't discuss the retail component at all. But there was that discussion as between residential and office commercial. And the resolution was for, I think, office commercial. Is that a fair?
I heard the consensus to be that both would be modeled.
Oh, right. I apologize. Right.
The both, the, the, the preference might be for, that we would have a wide net, and there would be a number of options available to developers, and so we would model both of them.
Right.
So, so does that mean that the suggestion is that we include residential as a permissible use? Whether as a right or by special permit? When, when, when we're, when, when we're drafting the zoning amendment?
To be decided, to be decided. Yeah. I, I, I don't think that this group that met this morning reached a true consensus on that. But as Lee says, the consensus was that it should be modeled. If for no other reason than to starting to put together the argument at town meeting as to why we did include some element of residential or not. But I, I, I don't, I'm sure there was no consensus in this meeting as to whether we should include residential as a component or not.
So it's, it seemed that, that I guess the, the modeling for the residential was to help inform the overall decision. And one of the reasons for that was in the event of a conclusion by the group to focus exclusively on commercial, that before town meeting, we would have a defensible comment that we did explore the effect and impact of residential.
And it might turn out that, you know, decision is made to, to include it. I think this was just, this was basically to kind of create the framework for the traffic study and what would be modeled, which would then form the foundation for the urban design plan. And the, and ultimately then the zoning that enabled the entire vision.
I am a little, I am concerned personally that if we reimagine this whole thing, we're going to, you know, further delay, you know, any realization or opportunity for this thing. Because, you know, we are, the real estate industry is on the precipice of an unknown moment. And, you know, we could very easily, we, you know, miss, you know, miss a market and that, and there does seem to be demand for one twenty eight office. You know, office space, there, there'll always be demand in any part of Needham for, for residential. And, and there won't always be demand as much for office space in all parts of Needham. So you know, I, I do worry that we could, you know, change this so much that we end up missing the market. And then end up as the town, you know, settling for an as-of-right build. But what does the board, what's the board's individual opinion on residential versus commercial?
Jean?
In, in general, I'm a proponent of residential development in Needham. I was very disappointed that our Chestnut Street, our project was, went down to defeat because that property was transit oriented. The problem with this parcel, it is that it is not transit oriented. It's much too far to walk to the train. The fifty-nine bus doesn't go by there. It loops around back of it. It, it, it's just, there's just nothing in, in the prospects. Just dreams and long-term ideas that would ever serve this, as, serve this parcel with transit. So I'm not too enthusiastic about residential for this parcel.
So I'll add my two cents worth. Like Jean, I agree that we benefit from residential development. That we know that the supply and demand issue is that if we don't have more residential housing in Needham, the prices are just going to keep climbing and climbing and climbing. However, we also know that the tax rate on commercial property is significantly greater. And this land is much more valuable as commercial property in terms of its impact on the tax rate. And I don't think that anybody who knows anything about planning would start off by saying, you know what we need along one twenty-eight? We need more residential development along the highway. I think it's completely absurd. I think the suggestion that this parcel be used for residential development is disingenuous. And I think, I suspect, that the idea of studying this for residential use is merely a delaying tactic. That's my two cents worth.
Do you think that that's something that FinCom is going to use to try and continue to kick this down the road and take no action?
I think FinCom and, and at least one member of the select board.
So.
So who, who of the, of the people who were participating were the ones who were advocating for residential? Was it, was it mostly FinCom?
Well, I would say that it came out of a, of the planning board. I mean, the planning board, you guys decided, I think, March, to basically add housing to be modeled when we were, when we were going to be doing the full study.
Late, 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 I take exception to that. I take exception to that. We've been down this road many times. And when I was involved in this, you kept trying to bring residential back into it. And I felt that the planning board had firmly decided not to put residential into this mix. I think that was something that you kept bringing up.
No.
So I take exception to that.
That wasn't what Mary Ann Cooley said this afternoon, but I'll go back and look at the minutes.
Well, just, the, the question was, who was advocating for residential this morning? Across this group.
That was my question.
And my take on it was, I don't think anybody was really advocating for it. Matt Barelli, his question was, he's not sure that there's a clear vision for the site. That's the way he expressed it, and I'm sure that's who Ted is referring to when he says that at least one member of the select board is thinking about residential. And he may be, but he didn't say that this morning. I, my take was that people thought that it made sense to model it for residential as well, not, not necessarily totally residential, maybe just a portion. The idea, my take was, we anticipate that there's going to be some opposition to just office and retail at that site at town meeting. And I think we want to be in a position where we can say, we modeled it both ways, and we reached the conclusion that it made more sense to stick with the office and retail. And I think the consensus in the group this morning would be that if we talked in those terms, but we didn't really talk in those terms. Would you agree with that, Lee and Adam?
Yeah, I think so.
Marty, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Was it suggested that the issue of whether or not there be residential on this parcel be driven by traffic issues? Well, I, I think the more accurate way to describe what the conversation was, that the entire vision, if we call it a vision, the entire vision should be driven by what the traffic constraints are. And we need a better feel for that from the traffic consultant. Sort of go backwards. Start, get the study to tell us what the traffic concerns and constraints are that this property can handle. And then once we have that, we can fine tune what we want on the site. That, I think that's the way the conversation went. Again, I ask, you know, there were a lot of people giving a lot of opinions this morning, so I don't know whether that's Adam's take, but that's what, that was my takeaway.
My, my sense was that, was that residential was, residential was brought up from the point of view of, of traffic. I, I did make a comment that, you know, when, when the coronavirus broke out, you know, there was, you know, there was a huge fear on the effect of, of commercial real estate. And there was a brief moment, and in fact, I think Marty, you and I had had a conversation about this at some point, some time ago, about whether we should now include, you know, a component of residential in the geography. But after I spoke to a number of commercial real estate brokers, I, I, I can, who all concurred that demand for one twenty-eight commercial real estate remains high and strong, that, you know, I would not support residential in, in that area. I don't, I don't agree that it's the right site for residential, when you could have residential in so many other parts of town. And as you and Jean had mentioned, highest and best use for va, of value for the town's point of view is with commercial. I, I, if it's, I don't doubt your, Ted, your read of the political happenings behind the scenes. I would like for us to plan for that so that we're properly, that all of us are in unison with our own position. And we can effectively quash any real momentum by any of the other participants in the committee or working group to, to stay clear of residential and to stay firm on, on office commercial.
I don't know if that answers your question clearly, Ted, but.
Yeah. So I'll just chime in on my recollection of our prior meetings that when we put together the Highway Commercial One zoning proposal that was presented, I believe it was presented to town meeting, that we did discuss residential considerably. And we all came to the conclusion, when I say we all, Adam was not on the board at the time, we all came to the conclusion that we should not include residential. That it should just be commercial, that this was not a good site for, for residential, and that residential would in fact detract from the commercial and possible retail uses of the site. But when we got to town meeting, there was a good-sized number of people who said, why, why, why aren't we considering residential here? It's across the street from residential. It's down the street from residential. Shouldn't we be considering residential? And so I'm in agreement, I think, with what I'm hearing here, which is that we don't see it as a good site for residential, but we need to be able to answer people when they say, why aren't we putting residential here? We have to be able to, to say, well, we looked at it, and we came to the conclusion, or whatever conclusion we reach. I mean, look, when we look at it, we may change our minds, because, you know, I, I said before to George Drunta, I'm not making any promises as to anything as to what will happen in the future. But I, I think the consensus today is, no, we don't see residential going in there. But we have to at least have the facts to present as the counterargument when people say, well, you just, you just dismissed residential offhand without even considering it. And, and so as a town meeting member, I'm going to vote against whatever, whatever you're presenting, because I don't like what you did. So.
Unless we, unless we, I feel like we need to have a clear unified vision as a planning board of what we see for this site. And Liz, and Liz did, I think, a very effective job at articulating at the, at that town meeting that this was a, you know, a commercial use. Residential was not, you know, was not part of that zoning bylaw change. You know, I, I think, you know, it's certainly an opportunity for us to lead. And whether we have the information from the traffic study as justification, or, or just as a matter of planning board and highest and best use for the town for that site, whatever the arguments are, I think we need to have a clear vision and articulate it consistently at all of these meetings. Lee, did you get a sense of whether Kate had any particular preference or vision of residential potential in that space?
No, I think that, I think that where that came No, I think that, I think that where that came from was that after town meeting, when we worked with GPI to develop the scope of work for what they were going to model, it was, we, we added housing in as one of the components to be modeled. I think in response to what we heard at town meeting. And then I think Kate was just talking about continuing, do, do we want to continue what we had done with GPI for the traffic study that we had actually scoped out immediately prior to COVID?
Ted, when you were on the, on the working group on this, did, were other members of the working group advocating for residential at that time as well?
No actual members of the working group. There were some voices, as has been mentioned, at town meeting who were advocating for other uses than commercial. And I question personally whether that was a sincere belief that this was a good site for residential, or whether it was a stalling tactic. You know, the question of, did you consider residential? I'm perfectly willing to model residential and consider residential. So that if we choose to do so, we can say, oh yes, we considered residential. And this is why it's not right for that site. I'm happy to do that. But I know, I believe strongly, personally, as an elected member of the planning board, that there is no use for residential at that site. And when you consider the difference in value in terms of tax revenue between the commercial property on that site and residential property at that site, we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot.
In addition, in addition to the use of services?
In addition to the cost to the town, that is correct.
I completely concur with that.
That, that issue, that point of view came across very strongly this morning. Several people talked about not wanting to, they used the term sub-optimize the tax revenue to the town. If we, if we were to go toward residential versus the commercial use. So clearly that was the view of most of the people on the call this morning.
Mary Ann articulated that pretty effectively, I thought.
Yeah. Dean?
I, this, this is a slight change of subject getting off the residential. But I recall after the town meeting, when this was presented, comments that I got saying that our visual presentations were not helpful. And I, I mentioned this to Lee right at that time. Natasha, right, helped us and she went, I mean, she did what we wanted. But basically, we had visuals that had blocks. You know, a block, it didn't really look like a commercial building or a retail building. It was just like, this is a one-story building, this is a three-story building. And people just could not visualize from that. So what I'm wondering is, as we go forward, are we going to have somebody on the team who actually would do the kind of architectural sketches and renderings, making it clear that these are just ideas, nobody is proposing that this is what it will look like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, before COVID, we had actually, you know, done the scope of work with GPI or this proposal. And, and we had gotten a proposal in from Natasha. And she was actually going to hire someone that was actually going to be doing the kind of drawings you were talking about to complement her foundational work. So that was all anticipated, that was all anticipated until we got to late in March.
When we get further down the road, you know, this does become, we have a clear expression of what we're going to advance. You know, we should, we should consider what the, it becomes a marketing effort. And we should have all the right marketing tools this time, given everything that we've heard and all the objections. You know, to be able to get this one, you know, you know, to take this one home. Marketing will be an important part of that, how we communicate the message and including all the other members of the various work, the other members of the working group, so that we're all aligned. So marketing is going to be a critical message and those components, Jean, I think are really important.
If we're going to be able to do this so that we can present it to town meeting next May?
That's the idea.
That's what the goal is, yes.
Which means we'd have to go to hearing in December this year, is that right?
December or the beginning of January. December, probably the beginning of January.
Do we have a sense, Lee, this wasn't really discussed this morning, do we have a sense how long it's going to take for this study to be performed?
Well, I, I don't think it's going to take as much time because we're not doing any counts. I think this person is going to be using existing data. I mean, that's what I'm going to be working out with them this week and the beginning of next week.
Couple of months to get the report?
I think that that's not unreasonable because we're not doing traffic counts. The person is using existing traffic data.
And then plugging in an algorithm that, you know, based on certain variables.
Well, I think they're using existing traffic, that's what I want to hear from them. I want to hear, how are you doing traffic studies in the, in this context? So we have, you know, we have data out there that's not complete. Is, do we have sufficient data to allow them to go forward? And I think, I think we do. And I think, I think it probably creates a worst case situation because I don't think we're ever going to go back to the kind of traffic we have had.
As a, as a planning measure, should we consider? When the, when the traffic study comes back, you know, they're going to come back with, with certain figures based on certain densities, right?
That's right. And that's, those are the pieces that we're going to ask them to model. So they're going to have their existing data and it's going to show the existing trips. And they're going to show the existing distribution of those trips. And they're going to show the existing level of service at key intersections under the existing situation based upon the data that we collected right before COVID and the state collected. And then we've got to tell them what levels of density we want them to model and what the ratio should be between commercial and retail. To have them help us figure out what the optimal balance is with improvements being made to maintain the existing level of service at those intersections. I think the articulated goal, the time we get it previously was we want to find, you know, the, the point, the development point at which those intersections continue to function as well as they do today with the improvements that are feasible within those layout lists. In terms of timing and in terms of additional lanes.
So should, should, like I was bringing, like I brought up earlier today, should we have on our own a vision for what the expected outcomes are?
Yes, we did, we, I'll share with you, Adam, the proposal that got developed initially. There were certain threshold FARs that were created that they were going to model as long as, as well as, I think, 200 units of housing in a mixed use development. And then they were also asked, basically, given that, given that data and given its impact on existing intersections and given the improvements that were feasible to those existing intersections, what was the, the number, basically, in terms of a land use mix that could be accommodated at that property?
So that if, if the number comes back in a range between X and Y, it yields the highest and best use for this? Is that right? That's ultimately.
It's telling you what the FAR is with a certain land use mix that the intersections can accommodate.
Right.
At, at that stated goal. If the goal was at that time, and we talked about it earlier, was the existing intersections continue to function at their, at their same level of service? And, and we make improvements to those intersections that a developer will pay for to ensure that. And that will accommodate, you know, a certain level of development and a certain land use mix. And so they're going to assist us in helping us figure out what that ratio is.
We can anticipate some of that. Should we be advocating for any of the potential opponents on FinCom or the Select Board? Should we be advocating in advance of receipt of that proposal? That if it comes back between X and Y, this is the best use? In other words, I want to, I want to win over any of this opposition in, you know, as early as possible. What is the best way to achieve that? Can we, you know, if we can isolate what their objections are through the process or reasonably anticipate it? And say that, you know, this is a numbers exercise and the numbers yield this. And there's no reason for them to be able to object now or later, as long as they buy into that rationale and that range at the outset. Do you know what I mean? Does that make any sense?
I don't think you're going to get them to agree to that, Adam, at the outset. They're going to want to see what the traffic study shows based upon modeling with, with 200 units of residential, without 200 units of residential, or with a different.
And with density of, a certain density of office against other density of office.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just, we just have to give the, the traffic engineers leeway to do what they're going to do. And then we see what the numbers are and we make our arguments then. That's, that's how I, how I read it.
Yeah, me too.
Ted, was John Connolly one of the opponents in the last working group or the last time around?
I believe John had significant concerns, yes. He was one of the ones who was very, very concerned about the traffic.
All right, is there anything we can do to direct the traffic study in advance that the result of, of which would ease his, would assuage his concern about traffic?
You're asking me to speculate? My opinion is no.
Okay.
Again, there are what people think and what people say. And a lot of the stuff that we heard, both at town meeting and at the public hearing that we had at the Broadmeadow School, were, were people throwing debris in the road? You know, why are you rushing this, for example, when it's been considered for five years? I mean, there was a lot of stuff said that had no substance to it. And it was just thrown out there to try and put a roadblock in to the proposal, which in fact it did. Well, I think it would be fair to also say that John Connolly in particular, I think, was offended that he got some study later than he thought he should have gotten it. That upset him. Oh yeah, that's true. The Finance Committee thought that they had not been consulted early enough in the process.
That's why we have this working group, so that we're all aligned now in theory.
Try to get buy-in from the, as close to the beginning as we can, yeah.
That's why I want to identify, that's why I'm trying to anticipate as best as possible, any of the malarkey. And, you know, and try and find strategies to, to try and head it off at the pass. But I, I, you know, I certainly hear what you're saying, Paul, that we have to let a lot of this play out. And, and then articulate our position once we have effectively that evidence.
I also don't want to give the opponents the ammunition of saying, you know, you guys, you guys engineered this so that it would come out such that residential would be, you know, a negative result.
I, I actually, I actually don't want, I think that's our job, that's our elected job to engineer that.
We do get accused of that sort of thing, though I'm trying to remember what.
Well, getting, getting.
Along those lines.
Getting accused of being, getting accused of, you know, being in cahoots with a developer is one issue, which I think is abhorrent in, when it's articulated. But as, but, but having, but having a vision of what we're trying to develop in the best interest of the town, that's got to be our number one job.
Well.
We're also a political body and we have to consider the, the, the politics of what we heard at town meeting, that there was enough of a, a, a support for, for residential here that we can't just say, well, we're the planning board, this is our vision. So, you know, either vote it or don't vote it.
We have to anticipate objections and concerns and try to come up with as much ammunition as we can to override those concerns. So, so let me just give an illustration, right? In Chestnut Street, they said, oh, you've got a developer. You're proposing this zoning change just to accommodate this developer.
Right.
At Muzzy, they said, you don't have a developer. How can you propose this zoning change without a developer?
Right.
I know, I know.
Absolutely, Ted, absolutely, that's what happened. Drove me absolutely nuts, sitting there at the front of town meeting. When that argument was.
That's what I mean when I say, people say things just to create the argument, whether or not it is something they believe, or whether or not it is something that makes sense, or whether they have taken offense because we didn't treat the Finance Committee as respectfully as they wanted to be treated. You know, I, I don't have a problem at all. If we say, this is what we believe is the best use at this property. What are all of the objections that are going to be raised against us? And how do we respond to them? And how do we say we've considered all of those possibilities? I'm perfectly happy to consider turning it into a soccer field the way one town meeting member wants it to be. Or maybe it was a park, I'm not even sure, it was a sport field. But, you know, I'm perfectly willing to consider making part of it residential. I'm perfectly willing to consider making it all office or all retail. But, you know, at the end of the day, we need to bring a recommendation forward that we believe is in the best interests of the town and be prepared to fight for it. Yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement on that.
Yep, I think we are.
Speaking of parks, has anybody mentioned an ice skating facility, hockey? Because the proponents of this town having an ice hockey facility have gotten frustrated, I think, with the idea of using the, the community gardens and the drag park. Is that something that people are starting to talk about as this is being a site for that kind of facility?
I, I haven't heard it, it certainly wasn't discussed this morning.
You have?
I don't, no, I have not.
Well, under the present zoning, that's an allowed use. And shortly after we had that meeting about Ridge Hill and the Nike site, and it got clear that most of the people there did not want to see a hockey rink at those sites. I did have a conversation with John Bullion, who is a proponent of a hockey rink in town. And I said, John, doesn't the Muzzy site make sense? It's right off the highway. It, you know, I think it's a perfect site for a hockey rink myself. Not that we would get the best tax benefit from this site, that's clearly wouldn't be. But if we can't get a zoning change and have it developed, you know, as, as, you know, right now, they can put a hockey rink there, the hockey people want to explore it. I think it's a, I think it's a, a pretty good place to have a hockey rink if we're going to have a hockey rink in town. And John said, yes, they're already working on it. He's working with the hockey people and talking to the Muzzy family.
You think the Muzzy family is going to get their best price out on that property by turning it over?
They wind up selling and they want to close, and they want to close the, the dealership or scale down the use of the land on the dealership. They, they could make some money on, on a lease to a hockey rink. Not going to make any money selling, so, well, actually, actually, they might make money. money selling it to somebody.
You're not a commercial developer, are you, Paul?
No, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the develop, who, me?
Yeah, because...
I can clearly practice law, Ted.
Because when you look at the value of the land at that site, there is no way the Muzzy family, I believe, would ever accept a price that the hockey people could afford.
I completely agree with that.
If you look at, if you look at the developer who built the, the, the athletic facility in Wellesley where the church used to be.
On Route 9?
On Route 9.
Yeah.
Who, and that's like their third or fourth similar project. They're really into the, into developing that kind of a facility.
That's a lot more than just a skating...
That person, that person could probably afford to pay Muzzy what they're looking for.
But that land was town land. That was not privately owned land. You're going to tell me that the developer of that facility paid market price for that parcel? You'd have to prove it to me.
He didn't buy that land. It's on a long-term lease with the town.
From the town. Exactly my point.
This is not going to happen at that site.
I, I can say that I recall observing some of the Facebook groups or the Needham Facebook group, the unofficial one. There was just quite a few posts about using the space for, for ice hockey. But I, again, I, I agree with you, Ted. There's that, you know, such a comparatively low use could have, facility could afford the mark, the realistic market price that they could, that they could achieve even if they sold it to basically a warehouse user. They'd be better off selling it to a warehouse user on an as, on an as-of-right build, you know, and get more money for them for a hockey rink.
I only raised it because we're talking about people who have their own reasons for slowing things down. That may be one group. Anyway.
Anyway, I think I'd, I'd like to move on.
Me too.
So that's our report from what happened this morning.
Thank you.
But I do have a question, Lee, which, which, which this raises because we're talking about, you know, multi-unit residential, which we're adding 72 units or we will be adding 72 units for over 55 housing at Weston, Weston Highland, you know? Whatever happened to the proposal to put 200 or 250 apartments behind Staples? I haven't heard anything on that project.
I haven't heard anything lately. I know that the first deal fell apart and I, I did hear that they were, he was looking at another property owner adjacent to one of the parcels he had, but I have not heard anything within the last three and a half months.
So you think that, that development might be, might be dead?
I don't know if it's dead or not. I, I haven't heard anything myself.
Interesting. Okay. Anything else, Lee, from the planning director?
I think the CEA knows this, we're, the town's going to be moving forward to hire our new economic development director and we think we hope to have somebody in place by the, by the time the CEA meets again, which is in a month or at the end of this month. So that's, that's moving, that's moving forward. And just to refresh everybody's memory, town meeting now is set, I think, for October the 5th, which is why we're holding our public hearing on the zoning change in August. We don't customarily hold zoning change, zoning hearings in, in August, but the warrant's going to close, I think, the end of August. And that's why we're doing an, an August 11th hearing on, on the zoning. Of course, October 5th could switch, but that's currently the schedule.
Which in itself will bring objections from some people saying, how can you hold the public hearings in the middle of the summer?
Well, I think we're doing everything by Zoom, so you can watch no matter where...
From wherever you are, that's the answer.
Yeah, dial in from the cave.
Given that we're having a presidential election and we just passed a statute allowing for more mail-in ballots, I don't, I don't see town meeting moving any, any later than October 5th or else Teddy Eaton will have a heart attack. Do any of the, do any of the board members have anything before I give a report on something?
I, I would say that LCB Senior Living has reached out to me in capacity as Chair of the CEA and also President of Needham Heights Neighborhood Association to make a presentation of their proposal, which I anticipate in August for the CEA and in September for, for the Needham Heights Neighborhood Association. Both will be done, you know, by Zoom. And I don't know yet whether the council or the board will be called upon to take a vote and draft a letter of support or opposition, one way or the other. It is possible. But I just wanted to keep you guys informed that that's...
What is this proposal, Adam?
The, the owners of 100 West, West...
Oh, okay.
And the redevelopment of the former Avery Manor.
Okay.
Site.
Good, that's good. So I just want to comment, when we had our chair, vice chair meeting on Friday, on Heather Lane, which is going to be in front of us at our next meeting. Lee mentioned that there's the possibility that Mr. Pierceak would agree to giving a conservation easement on a portion of the property that abuts the Charles River, which both Jean and I were very hap- being conservation-minded folk, were, were happy to hear. But Lee presented it to us that Mr. Pierceak would not want the public to have access to the land that was subject to the conservation easement. And both Jean and I, being people who like the idea of our conservation land, like Ridge Hill being available for Needham Heights to use, were saying, well, you know, maybe we should consider pushing back on that and seeing if we can get some public access to that land. If, if in fact it is on the table to have a conservation easement there.
Especially because it is along the Charles River.
Right. And so I reached out to Janet Bernardo, the Chair of the Conservation Commission, to see whether this is something to conserve, if, if the planning board wanted to, to go that route, whether the Conservation Commission would agree with us on that. And Janet's response was a, a very enthusiastic maybe yes, maybe no.
Why would she, why would she say no?
From the point of view of people coming out of the Charles River and then walking on the vegetation that is growing along the river and harming that vegetation, that, that is a protection of the, of, of, of that resource that the Conservation Commission would want to protect depending upon what the vegetation is that is growing there. And so what Janet was suggesting is that a couple of members of the planning board and a couple of members of the Conservation Commission approach, well, I shouldn't say that they approached, but they're the ones who would then do it, that somebody approached Mr. Pierceak, and I would think through Bob Smart, to allow for a site visit. So that a couple of members of the planning board, a couple of members of the Conservation Commission could take a look at what's there. And, and then the Conservation Commission could say either yea or nay as to whether the vegetation that's there is vegetation that they want to protect or whether, you know, oh gee, that's, that's, that's vegetation that we don't care if they stomp it out. Yeah, and maybe it would be nice if, if kayakers could, could stop there and have a picnic, that kind of thing. And whether the planning board wanted to pursue it.
If this became town land and the town...
It would not be town land. The town would have an easement, a conservation easement. Mr. Pierceak would still own it.
Okay. So in the event the town has an easement on it...
It would be a conservation easement, which means that it could not be developed.
I understand. In the event that that, that the town retains or exacts an easement from the property owner for that purpose, does the town have any responsibility maintaining that, that?
No. He has responsibility to maintain it and the constant, if, and whoever holds the easement, which I would envision it to be the Conservation Commission, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. It could be a private charitable organization that holds these easements. I mean, like the trustees of reservations hold...
The Needham Land Trust.
And the Needham Land Trust, you know, I didn't want to toot our own horn, Jean. Jean and I are both members of the Needham Land Trust, which is specifically, was specifically formed because the state put in, excuse me, the Commonwealth, put in a law that, that if land is purchased for con- I'm, I'm sorry, if an easement is given, a conservation easement is given, is purchased by CPA funds, the Town Conservation Commission cannot be, cannot be the recipient of the easement for some reason.
Because that can't enforce, the town can't enforce against itself is the idea.
I guess. Whatever the idea is. And so we formed, we formed the Needham Land Trust to have a friendly holder of easements on behalf of the town, basically a property that's purchased with, with CPA funds. But, but assuming that the Conservation Commission were granted the easement, the Conservation Commission would have the right to go onto the land, to inspect it, to make sure that the easement was being properly maintained. And if it wasn't, to enforce the easement against the property owner and say, you have to maintain it.
So if kayakers are coming down and they have a picnic and they create a mess, the, the, the landowner is required to have a garbage facility and/or recycling facility on-site and to remove and maintain that?
Which is a good reason for the landowner to say, I don't, I don't, I don't want to allow private, I don't want to allow public access.
It completely, it completely depends on how the conservation, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Paul. It, it completely depends on how the conservation restriction is worded.
Are you asking for feedback from the planning board on whether or not we think you should, as Chair and Vice Chair, pursue this matter with the Conservation Commission and Mr. Pierceak?
Yes.
I'm in favor of that. It's 10 o'clock.
It's only 9:59, Ted. It's not 10 o'clock yet.
I'm in favor too. It's 10:59 and a half.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
It's 10 o'clock. I'm in favor.
Okay. So, Lee, I'm going to ask you to coordinate with Debbie Anderson...
Okay.
To talk, talk about how we approach Mr. Pierceak with the idea of having a site visit.
Okay, I can do that.
And Lee, for background, I'd like to see how this parcel fits with other parcels along the river and whether, you know, where, anywhere nearby, we already have any kind of conservation restrictions.
We do right next door on the Riverbend Lane project.
That's what I was thinking.
It would probably connect to the conservation easement that Riverbend Lane, the developer there gave to the Conservation Commission when Riverbend Lane went in.
Right.
Janet even mentioned that.
Yes, continuous.
Has that, has that site been utilized for kayakers or others?
I have no idea.
No, but Bell Lane has. The Bell Lane subdivision, the planning board approved at the peninsula, we, as a condition of that subdivision going in, there was a, the peninsula area was basically designated as a...
That's right, that was a condition.
...area for canoes. And then easement was granted across the back of the property for a future trail connection with properties on either side in the event that they get developed. So there was some thought about public access to the river and connectivity of adjacent parcels, at least in the case of Bell Lane.
Well, it's now after 10 o'clock. It's 10:01. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, so sad, dude.
Let's take a vote. Mr. Jacobs?
Aye, aye, aye.
I've lost connectivity, so I've not hearing anything.
I'd say yes. Yes?
Ms. McKnight?
Yes.
Mr. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Block?
Yes.
I'm not hearing it, but I'm, yes. And I, and I vote yes, we're adjourned. Alex, everyone, recording.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.